Good evening, welcome. We're just waiting for Ms. Payne to get comfortable.
It's her birthday.
Oh, and it's her birthday. Please, it's her birthday.
Happy Birthday to you.
And Helike, would you please note that all present? I'd like to start off by apologizing. I'm sorry that we are running a few minutes late. Unfortunately, I mean fortunately, we've been locked in a room for the last four and a half hours. That could be exciting.
I think we need to say the pledge.
Yes.
Pledge.
Trustee, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
And welcome, by the way.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Item 1.4, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve.
March 20th, 2017, March 29th, 2017, April 12th, 2017, May 10th, 2017, May 24th, 2017, May 24th, regular meeting, 2017, June 6th, 2017, June 20th, 2017, June 28th, 2017. There was a second?
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Call a question.
I think you missed the April 26th.
April 26th, 2017? Thank you, Dr.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
1.6, open forum. Is anyone here to speak under open forum? Anybody signed up? Once, twice? 1.7.
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Mr. Tony Ayub, Program Coordinator, Emergency Medical Services Paramedic, and Dr. Paula Mitchell, Dean, Health Career and Technical Education, Math and Science, will recognize the El Paso Community College Emergency Medical Technician Dual-Credit Students from EPISD who placed first, second, and fifth in different categories at the Health Occupation Students of America, POSA International Leadership Conference Competition, July 2017.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Fiero, Dr. Sarata, members of the board and audience. It's with great pleasure that we share good news with you, with our EMT dual-credit students from EPISD. I'd like to introduce Mr. Tony Ayub in his role as EMSP faculty coordinator, so that he can introduce the students and tell you what they want. Thank you. Tony?
Good evening, Chairman Fiero, Dr. Sarata, and members of the board. I'm Tony Ayub, and I'm the Program Coordinator for the MSP program here at El Paso Community College. This evening, I would like to present to you a group of outstanding dual-credit EMT students from the El Paso Independent School District CCTE program here in El Paso. These amazing students successfully competed in the Health Occupation Students of America International Leadership Conference Competition, and they placed first, second, and fifth in different categories. Dual-credit students affiliated with the El Paso Community College GSP program consistently dominate the region in whatever categories they compete. El Paso Community College has one of the largest dual-credit EMT programs in the state. Many of our teams go on to state and national competitions, representing their programs, their school, and their school district extremely well. Among our most competitive teams are those from El Paso Independent School District, CCTE program. They consistently outscore the competition, and this year was no exception. Under the direction of Ms. Rebecca Manriquez, full-time faculty with El Paso Independent School District, and an EMSP adjunct faculty here at the college, and Ms. Tracy Prado, a full-time EMSP instructor at El Paso Community College, the students this year have excelled in their competition. Unfortunately, both Ms. Manriquez and Ms. Prado could not be here this evening. Ms. Prado is currently out of town, and Ms. Manriquez is already preparing for the next year for this fall. She is currently attending the Texas Health Occupations Association Conference in College Station. In addition to that, a few minutes ago, we received a text from her. It's interesting to note that I would like to add that a few minutes ago, Ms. Manriquez received the Texas Health Occupations of America Teacher of the Year Award for the State of Texas. So this is among our great faculty we have here. In reference to our students, this year, our students from CCTE went on to compete at the POSA International Leadership Conference Competition in Orlando, Florida. As you all know, by the time students are competing at a national or an international competition, the best of the best are represented there. Our students spend many hours, not only doing preparing for their projects, involve many working evenings, working weekends, in order for them to achieve the perfection, not only at their skills, but the many public service projects that they did. We are very proud of the awesome students that these great teachers and coaches were able to work with, and I'd like to present to you the winners this evening. We do have plaques to present for these students, and I was hoping Chairman Fiero and Dr. Sarata, would you help us in presenting plaques to these students? If that's appropriate. Our first student is a member of the MRCT team, and they placed first. That's the medical reserve corps, and not only did they do a lot of projects local with Dr. Mitchell, but they presented projects within their school district. Our first student that we're presenting to actually is out of town today. Her mom will be picking up her plaque, and that is Ms. Chantel Guillen. Our second student from the MRC team, as a matter of fact, there were six, this was a team of six students. Our second student is Ms. Tiana King. And I think those medals just look awesome. Our third member is Ms. Amber Ledesma. Our next member is Ms. Malia McNair. Our fifth member, Ms. Monica Ponse. And rounding out this team of six, of international winners, first-place winners at an international competition, Ms. Kelly Ricks. Our next team was a team of two students. They practiced many, many hours because the competition, they competed in a CPR. As you can imagine, a lot of people become proficient at that, so you had to approximate perfection. One of our students couldn't be here this evening, but one of them is Ms. Paola Quiros. Our last team was also a team of two young ladies. Unfortunately, they're both out of town at this point, but we do have one of the moms here to pick up the plaques for these two young students. Our first student, the competition was CERT, and that's Certified Emergency Response Team. Great asset to any community. First student is Ms. Sophia Williams, and her mom is here. She will also be picking up the plaque for Ms. Mafa Ta. That's our team. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us recognize these young ladies. Have a good evening. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, Mr. Ayub. Well done. Congratulations to you and your students.
Item 1.7.2, optional presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
Good evening.
Good evening. Greetings, esteemed Board Chair, Mr. Fiero, Board Members, and Dr. Sarata. My name is Michelle Chavez. I am your PSA Secretary. Professional Staff Association is proud to report the progress of our student scholarship fundraising projects through the EPCC Viva El Paso night that was held on July 14th. The weather was great. We appreciate our EPC students for part of the performance. PSA also sold kettle popcorn to the audience, and all those proceeds will be going towards our students' scholarships that will be held in the upcoming fall semester. We would also like to thank everyone who bought tickets to Viva and the kettle corn for the support of all of our initiatives. We would like to remind the Board of last month's proposal for a one-time $1,000 longevity award to employee/PSA members who have served the college for many years but did not benefit from last year's salary survey. We continue with our recommendation for 4% across the board to all employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ramirez, good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Sarata and esteemed members of the board, good evening. Because the board will soon be making a final decision on the budget for the coming year, it behooves us to make final comments concerning salary increases for both full and part-time faculty. As we have often bemoaned, salary increases granted by the board over the last several years have not come close to the actual cost of living increases. In January, we spoke to the fact that County Judge Veronica Escobar had requested that EPCC support and adopt the 2016 prevailing wage rates to ensure fair, uniform, and living wage, and to the fact that the issue of compression has not yet been addressed after all these years. In March, even though we cannot legally call for an increase at this time, it was pointed out that our tax rate was obscenely low in the comparison to those of local school districts, implying that if the issue had been addressed just a little at a time over the past years, we would not be in such a pickle today. In April, we requested a straight percentage increase rather than tiered increase, the adoption of which would be fairer to everyone. And finally, in May, we reported that last year's cost of living increased by 3%, and that the same was predicted for this and the coming year, leaving it next to impossible to keep up with, for instance, the 10% increase in drug prices alone in the first part of this year. Please understand that the loss of real funds connected to a 1.5% increase does not only affect one year's salary. The loss grows exponentially each passing year. For those of us who might have looked forward to retirement in the next couple of years, the last two years upon which our retirement would be based is looking pretty grim. Since this will be my last address to the board as President of the Faculty Association in the Senate, I think it is appropriate that I thank the members of the EPCC Board of Trustees, both present and past, for your kind and courteous attention month after month for the past 18 years. I had hoped to make it 20, perhaps followed by retirement, but according to the Spanish ditto, "El hombre propone pero Dios dispone." Sometimes God has different plans for us, and I'm sure I can find another way to try to make the world a better place. I believe I speak for the majority of the faculty when I say that aside from the salary issue, we have, over all these years, enjoyed a very good relationship with the members of the board and with the administration. I would also like to thank Dr. Sarata and Mr. Smith for having so graciously welcomed our input and listened to our concerns, seeking solutions for as many of them as possible. The other vice presidents, the deans, the department heads, and so many other employees and colleagues also merit my gratitude for having helped to solve problems and seek solutions for the various situations faculty have encountered over the years. Many of it has been done quietly without any fanfare, but greatly appreciated. Together, we have certainly accomplished a great deal. One significant academic accomplishment was the change in designation of faculty status, moving from the generic instructor to the faculty ranking system with titles of Assistant Professor, Associate Professor, and Full Professor, based on tenure and number of years of service to the college. I'm pleased to note that the designation of Professor Emeritus is also well on its way to being included. I look forward to that one. With the help of the administration, we have made so many changes in the last 18 years which have made life easier. For example, we have designated faculty parking and expanded handicap parking. We have expanded adjunct faculty workspaces. We no longer have to stand in line in order to personally submit paper printouts of our grades, even though we've already submitted them electronically. And we have emergency funds set aside to send faculty to conferences at which they have been invited to speak only at the last minute. For these things, we're very grateful. Most important of all, the administration and the faculty have learned to work well together in the spirit of shared governance, and it is my hope that this will continue. I am so grateful to have been given the opportunity to represent my faculty colleagues and to have worked with all of you for such a very long time. I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez, for everything you've done for the district. We cannot thank you enough.
It was my great pleasure. Thank you.
I echo those thanks, Dr. Ramirez. Thank you for always being a wonderful colleague, always being agreeable, even when we disagree. Thank you so much for all that you've done for the faculty. And the chair reminded me that open forum is always available to you.
Oh, don't give me any ideas.
There's a two-minute time limit.
Thank you so much.
Item 1.8, communications, none. Item 1.9, Board of Trustees Business. Item 1.9.1, the Board of Trustees will deliberate on establishing regular meeting dates.
I'd like to remind the board that, I'd like to remind the board that after every election, we're given the opportunity to reset or set meetings, our monthly board meetings. We had a request from one of the board members to move our meeting to the third Thursday of every month, and that's what this agenda item is on there for. So I make a motion that we move our meetings to the third Thursday of every month.
I second it.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Oh, item 1.9.2?
Item 1.9.2, the Board of Trustees will deliberate on the county of El Paso's potential lawsuit regarding SV4.
I make a motion that we visit this after executive session.
Second. But Chair, may I just make a comment?
Yes.
On the item 1.9.1, I think at the beginning, September is when the meetings will be on Thursdays. Is that correct?
Let's visit with Pam and check the schedule.
Okay.
I think there was a...
Because I think in August, we're supposed to be, it'll still be on Wednesday.
So the one in August stays on the Wednesday?
Unless you all direct otherwise.
Right, then we'll revisit. Well, we'll have Pam busy.
On Thursday.
That's okay, though. I'm gonna make it work, because I'm one.
We'll visit with Pam on the schedule.
Okay. We had a motion and a second to address this after executive session.
Yes.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 1.10, Board Reports. Item 1.10.1, Treasuries Report, June 30th, 2017, No Action Is Necessary. Item 1.10.2, Presidents Report. Item 1.10.2.1, Dr. Sarata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fiero, members of the board, again, always my pleasure to address and to bring to light some of the great things that are happening at El Paso Community College. This is the third consecutive year that the Medical Laboratory Technology Program has another 100% National Certification Exam pass rate. The 10 graduates of the May 2017 class are now American Society for Clinical Pathology certified. Congratulations to the graduates, and thanks for a job well done to Veronica Dominguez, our Program Coordinator, and to Rosa Martha Loyah, Clinical Coordinator, as well as adjunct faculty, and Dean Paula Mitchell. Great job, in addition to what we heard earlier, which was in my report last month about the dual-credit students in EMT. The Law Enforcement Academy announced that Class 76, 28 students took the state licensing examination at the El Paso Sheriff's Academy, and all passed on their first attempt. Class 77, 21 cadets held their completion ceremony July 7th in the boardroom. The combined 76th and 77th classes represent 49 new cadets that will be commissioned as Texas Peace Officers. Congratulations to the students for their hard work, to Commander Bobby Flores, to the instructors, and to Ms. Lupa Loyah, Program Assistant. Thank you all for a job well done, to Barry Bogum, Law Enforcement Training Academy Director, as well as Dr. Jaime Farias, our AVP for Workforce and Continuing Ed. EPCC IT and COSC, Computer Science Faculty, facilitated a cybersecurity summer camp at the Code Independent School District from June 5th through the 9th. 15 schools participated, with 110 middle school students attending. Thank you to the dedicated work provided by faculty members Del Nahara, Norma McKinsey, Tony Vargas, Dr. Christian Servin, and to Dean Dr. Maisha Pagel for their support, and to our colleagues at SISD for supporting that as well. The Criminal Justice Club and Faculty Club sponsors participated in the National Issues Forum titled "Seguridad y Justicia Como Debieron Las Comunidades Rusir la Violencia." Thank you. "How Should Communities Reduce Violence?" on July 20th on EPCC TV. The forum was conducted in Spanish. Congratulations to the students, the club sponsors, Mr. Hector Zamora, and Mr. Jorge Valenzuela, and again, Dean Dr. Maisha Pagel. EPCC's Omega Gamma Chapter of Phi Theta Kappa attended the Honors in Action Institute Conference held at Loyola University in Chicago in June. Topic of this year's 2017, Honors in Action, is How the World Works: Global Perspective. PTK Honors in Action is a project-oriented program designed to foster student success and fulfill its two missions: to recognize and encourage scholarship in a lively exchange of ideas, and to develop leaders who serve their communities. The members from EPCC are Mr. Al Arvizo, Faculty Advisor, Ms. Estefania Torres, President, Ms. Virginia Frenchie-Bissou, Historian, and Rachel Williams. Thank you to the members representing the college at the conference, and to Dean Jan Evler for the guidance and support given to PTK Chapter. The grand opening of the new Vaiverte Architecture Building will be held on Friday, August the 18th, at the Vaiverte campus at 9:30. We look forward to that event. Kudos to Dr. Amaya and his team, as well as Ms. Mo, who are coordinating that event, and to all the board for, we are finally seeing the fruition in the first building of many that will be coming up. Faculty Development Week will be held from August 14th through the 18th in 2017, and the first day of classes for Fall '17 will begin on Monday, August 21st. That concludes my report, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Uxer.
Item 1.11, Consent Docket. Only item 3.2 is included on the consent docket.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 2.0, Administration None. Item 3.1, Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just out of that, I've seen this several times. It might be helpful if we had a small index indicating what A, B, C, D, and E, and H, and all that stands for.
Will do, absolutely. No issues, Mr. Uxer. That is with regards to the pay grade, but we'll make sure that we provide that.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Haggerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.
Item 3.3, Information Items, No Action Is Required. Item 4.1, Consideration and Deliverance on the Approval of a Contract Extension with People Admin Incorporated to Continue to Provide Web-Based Recruitment Position and Performance Management in the Amount of $85,598.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a question. Does this come out of tech funds?
It's coming out of the IT software account, yes.
But I mean, does this come off of the amount that we charge each student per hour? Okay, so this comes out of the general budget?
Correct.
And I also have a question. Is this something that, that if an applicant isn't accepted, or they're, for whatever reason, I mean, will this system actually send them a letter, or contact them, identify them that they haven't, you know, met the next process? Because I know that there's been some complaints or discussion that people apply to positions at this college, and then they never hear back, anything. And I know everything is automated, and it's hard to advise them, oh, well, who do they contact, because they really can't?
That is a good question, and I'm going to ask Mr. Flores to respond, since he oversees HR. HR in this system.
So, in the recruitment process, the HR department is very careful on managing a recruitment process, so applicants are eventually told that if they have any questions to contact the HR department. So that would be the guidance that applicants would be given, to contact HR and seek an answer as far as they're being interviewed or not being interviewed, because HR would handle that communication with them.
When you say they're eventually told, what timeframe, I mean, are these...
They are, I didn't say that they were eventually told, but they could ask HR what the status is of their application, because the employment process is managed in a way that everything is very...
Automated.
Yes, automated.
No live person?
But, but there is not a response to applicants in an automated fashion.
You know, Doc, that's a very good point, and I know it's been brought up before. Doc Sarata, could you follow up on that? Because I do, I agree with them.
Because, I mean, I have, it is a diff, I mean, I don't know, is this, this is the same process, the same system that we've been using before, correct?
It is.
So sometimes where does it say on there, if you have a question, contact HR?
It would be, it would be on the position description that is advertised.
Oh, in the description, okay.
It goes to the newspaper, that's online, any questions, they're always referred to HR.
Okay.
But if, if a person applies and they have no questions, there's no contact.
Correct.
They don't really even know that their application has been accepted.
Considered, right.
Is, is that really a professional way to deal with people? Not to even respond to the fact that they've received, their application's been received? Where, I have personal knowledge of an individual that's, that's applied for a position, has no knowledge of what's going on until there's announcement the position's been filled.
That's a fair point, Ms. Uxer, and we will follow up, I will work with the team to follow up on this. Appreciate, I know that Board members have brought this up, we will follow up and have a report at the next Board meeting on the possibility of us looking at a system that will allow us to provide a status report to applicants.
And so then the question begs is that this system that we're about to vote on, does it do any of that, that we're, the concerns that we're addressing?
We'll follow up, Ms. Solis, I don't know.
Well then, the next question would be, can we put it off till next month, when we do know, most of the systems have that capability, but if, but we, we don't know if this one has, and we can wait till next month, maybe, would that be a problem?
Dr. Hiron, can, can this...
System that we have is used for three different things, applicant tracking when they apply, and that manages the applications, the transcripts, the resumes, and compiles, helps compile applicant pools for evaluation by committees, and all of that is currently automated, and to do a conversion, to do a selection and conversion would take us months to do, so we, we really recommend keeping the same system we have to keep the automated aspect of our employment process going. It also manages our job descriptions and allows us to automate job postings through the system. In addition to that, there's a module for performance evaluations that are currently happening at the district, so those three aspects of this module are very important.
Mr. Flores, I don't think we were asking to change the vendors, the question is, can this item be postponed one month so that we can get those questions answered in regards to responding to applicants and...
Because if it has the capacity and we just say have to pay an additional fee for that feature, then, you know, maybe, yeah, we...
Or it's not being utilized.
We'll get an answer for that.
So the question is, can this item be postponed one month, or does it need to be approved today?
It could be.
Or interfere with the process?
It could be postponed.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, call the vote, please.
I'm sorry, but what was the motion?
A motion, and a second to approve, now you have a, a motion to...
No, no, but Mr. Flores is saying that we, because of time, we need to approve it.
No, he said that we could wait.
I'm just saying, you gotta get rid of the first motion before you make your motion.
Was your recommendation, I mean, you said we could delay this a month, or that it needed to be approved? I mean, I may have misunderstood, I thought you had said that we needed to approve it tonight.
I heard you say both things.
That's the recommendation, to approve it.
Okay, maybe Mr. Garrett can answer that question. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would this contract cease today if we don't approve it, or will it go month to month until it's approved?
The contract term ends August 31st.
Okay.
So we can postpone, it is possible to postpone.
Okay.
It is not the recommendation of the administration, but it is possible.
Sure, so, but we can, we can direct, Doc Sarata to answer.
I withdraw my motion to approve. Any second?
A second.
Call the question.
Clarify, what is the motion, amend what?
To amend the motion to...
The motion is to withdraw the motion to approve. Spin second, call the question.
It's on to withdraw.
And then we'll make a motion to withdraw.
So the motion is to withdraw the original motion?
The answer, the questions are answered.
So we vote twice. Call the question, please.
Mrs. Robles?
You know what, I don't even, I'm trying to figure out what, what the motion is. Is the motion to postpone?
Yes.
To withdraw the motion?
First motion.
Yes, and then we'll, we'll make a motion to postpone.
All right.
So this is to withdraw. Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
I make a motion to postpone this item till next month.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 4.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Award a Contract to Sun Travel Incorporated to Provide Travel Services for the El Paso County Community College District.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Question, Jim.
Ms. Uxer?
And look, I don't see any cost associated with this, and I see, this says contract, but I don't see any cost with it, so is there a cost to it? Why do we do that? Is there a savings to it? And so what? What's the benefit to us? I mean, I make my own reservations, why should a contract, somebody else do something?
For, for every arrangement that they make, they charge us $27 for arranging the airfare.
As...
And there, and there is the ability for people to independently make their own arrangements, not go through Sun Travel if they'd like.
So for individuals' convenience, 27, how many, how many airfares are incurred over, say, an annual period? 100, so would be saving almost $3,000?
Yes, sir.
Is this just airfare?
They also can make hotel reservations and car rentals.
What's the fee for that?
There would be no fee for that.
Oh, they, they'll do those for free?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think the reason why they need it, Ms. Uxer, is because like, like these children that just went to Orlando, they don't have credit cards, and if the college is paying for the trip, we have to have some agency to, to book their flights and their hotels.
The advisor for the group can't do that?
If they want to do it with their credit card, I think that'd be great, but I don't think we pay them enough to pay for their flights.
We don't issue a company, I mean authorize on a company credit card, or you...
I think that's what, that's what there is, that's why we have this system.
Ms. Solis?
Yeah, I was just curious, this is a, a new contract award, who did we use prior to this?
We, we had Sun Travel.
Oh.
We've, we've been using Sun Travel.
So then this is actually an, an extension?
This was a competitive seal proposal, and they, and they were the awarded party.
Okay.
And because of their reputation and service in the past and cost, they were awarded the, they were awarded.
Okay. How long have we been using Sun Travel for these services?
They've been using them since I've been here.
Oh, a thousand years?
Yep.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 5.1, Physical Facilities, None. Item 6.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Contract Renewals for Access to Online Databases for the El Paso County Community College District Libraries in an Amount Not to Exceed $178,600.
Move to approve.
Second, then.
Question?
Yes, sir.
This is a renewal, have we continued to validate the actual need for these four sources? I mean, are we continuing to use them?
Yes, and, and in fact, we do an intentional review of the databases that are being used, and we make adjustments based on the student need district-wide, so we do...
And are these databases restricted such that we have to use this contract, or are they available through Google?
Many of these are only available through, through these providers.
Through subscription?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Great, any other questions? No, Pam?
Just a notation that these are to support the classes, the curriculum.
Correct.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 6.2, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract to Purchase Two Pike's Med Station 4,000 System Products from Medical Shipment LLC for Use in the Nursing and Vocational Nursing Programs in the Amount Not to Exceed $105,892. Move to approve.
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
How are these, I didn't see that compared to the others, the other state-of-the-art systems, how do these systems compare? Are there other systems that do the same thing?
The provider listed in the agenda, Premium Pike's is considered the gold standard in the nursing industry, and is what students would expect to, to, to use when they are in clinicals and in their permanent placements.
So you're, you're saying these are state-of-the-art?
Yes.
Okay, number one. Number two, what's the life cycle of these systems?
I am deferring to the Dean of Nursing for that one.
I mean, technology changes, are these good for six months or six years?
Two good questions.
I've had experience with these systems, working in the acute care hospitals and critical care units, and they're, they last for years. They're very, the pharmacies, pharmacists will come and load the Pixis, and it's bar-coded, so everything has to be scanned, the patient's armband is scanned, the medications are scanned, and it's a very well-controlled system for monitoring dispensing medications, anywhere from narcotics on down to an aspirin.
So, once they train on these, they'll be good for two to five, their learning knowledge will be good for two to five years, and the system, the machine itself is gonna be good...
I would think more like 10 to 15.
Okay, and so machines, machines are gonna last for five to 10 years, so annual cost is gonna be, you know, divide by 10 or something like that?
And that's based on my experience, I don't know the actual answer.
Now that, does this include training to go with those, or do the people, or do the instructors know how to use them right now? And is that fun, is that part of the acquisition cost?
I believe it does include the training, it's computerized, so that there, there will need to be some training.
Okay, computerized, and does that include update of the software instructions and something like that, or is it an additional cost next year when we get new information, new barcodes, do we then would pay for an update cost, or what's annual maintenance?
I don't know the answer to that. Ruben, do you know? I'll have to check into it and let you know.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 6.3, Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of the High School Equivalency Grant Award from the US Department of Education in the Amount of $475,000.
Move to approve, 6.3 and 6.4.
Second.
I mean, a second.
Item 6.4, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Grant Award from the US Department of Education College Assistance Migrant Program, CAMP, to seek to the El Paso Community College Education Program in the Amount of $261,498.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that I know the first part says no less than 100, and it said at least 40, okay. If we have, say, we're very, we're very efficient, and we have 150 qualifying migrant workers, what happens, are they all funded? I mean, no less than, there's no upper limit, so if there's any, if there's, will there be an additional cost? And if so, who's gonna bear those costs?
If we found that many, we'd make history.
Yeah, well, that's great, but I'm wondering, I'm not worried about to have, if that many in this.
We have the expert here.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Hello, members of the Board, as a matter of fact, if we recruit more than 100 students, we will make our best to serve them. I don't think we're gonna be able to recruit 150 students, but if we do, we'll try to serve them. We, we are limited to $475,000 in the first grant, and $278,000 on the second grant, so that's as much as we will be able to spend on these two grants.
How, how many did we serve last school year?
Last year, I believe we served, we were funded to serve 120 students.
120?
Yeah, but...
How many did we find?
I'm sorry?
How many did we actually find and serve?
We finally, we served 120.
120.
And this was a renewal, it was a new grant, and we applied to serve only 100, because the new GD exam was a little more difficult, so we decided to serve less students, so we hope to be able to serve them all.
If you happen to get 120, will the cost to bear that program actually exceed the $475?
No, we cannot spend more than $475,000.
So you just pare back the services you provide?
Yeah, I mean, we will, we will not really reduce the amount of services we provide, we will just try to divide the services accordingly. I mean, we have experience serving more students than we actually are funded to service if necessary.
Okay, and the other question said the grant will also provide health education and other support services. That's awful open-ended, other support services.
Legal services, help with financial services, housing, we have, we have partnerships with different agencies in the community, so what we do is, when our student, when our students come and they ask for a service that they might need, like a legal service, or need for housing, or need for help with children, daycare, they will try to partner them with an agency that provides those services and facilitate that.
We do what we can for as many people as we have up to the limit of the grant money?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, so we're not on the hook for any additional, or we don't have any other options?
No, no.
Okay.
Mr. Morio, thank you, is this a grant that you have to write every year, is it an annual grant?
No, it, it goes for five years, but you have to, I mean, you have to provide satisfactory results every year in order to get an award every year. So the awards come every year, you, you essentially get funded for five years, conditional on approval every year.
Okay.[1757.68] Okay.
So this is, we're going to our second year for both the High School Equivalency Program and for the College Assistant Migrant Program.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Let me say that I, I think that it's probably a good idea, I'm just, I just want to make sure that if we happen to do a better job than we anticipate, that we can continue to do the best job we can for as many people as come.
Yeah, we've been doing this. The High School Equivalency Program we've had since 2001, so we're in our 16th year. And the College Assistant Migrant Program's a new grant, we're in our second year. So we have quite a lot of experience running these type of grants.
Sir, do, do we see any relief on the level of difficulty of the GED tests from your point of view?
Yes. The first year that the GED, the new GED test went into place was in 2014, and we had a lot of difficulty with the test. We had a bad year. Our numbers went down to 37% of the students that we serve, only 37% earned their GEDs. That was a very low number for us. It was consistent with national results. All other head programs in the country did very poorly. Last year, we went up to about 80%, which is higher than other head programs, so we're doing very well with the new GED. It took about a year for our instructors to get comfortable with the new GED and learn all the ins and outs.
And can you, just for the sake of the audience, tell us, what are the qualifiers for the students that you serve, the participants?
Oh, they are migrant workers. They have to have worked in the field for 75 days in the past two years, or they have to be relatives of people who have worked in the fields for 75 days in the past two years. Immured family members, or people who live in the household that are supported by the main agricultural worker.
And does that include the canaries also?
Depends on the kind of work they're doing, the canaries. If it's temporary work, yes, if it's permanent work, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Muro.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero. Item 7.1, Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Continuing Education Tuition Rates for New Courses.
Move to approve.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Ms. Nahara.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Fiero.
Aye.